Good evening. Call to order, the May fourteenth, two thousand and twelve, Harwich Board of Selectmen's meeting. We came out of con- executive session in which we discussed contract negotiations. And we'll move next to a weekly briefing. And I'll turn it over to Jim for a quick comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a, as you know, that there is a local election tomorrow, and we've got, I believe, four ballot questions. Ballot question number three deals with surviving spouse health insurance. And quite frankly, when, when people get to the polls, they'll, they'll read it. Most likely, there will be confusion about the, the purpose and intent. The, the language in the ballot question is, is quite difficult to understand, but it's taken, extracted right out of the statute. And the, the problem is that the statute is chapter thirty-two B, section ninety and a half. And just, just to give you the background, again, what it means is that in nineteen ninety-eight, town meeting approved Article fifty-three, which authorized the town to pay fifty percent of health insurance for surviving spouses. And, and D and a half, in the same article, authorized the selectmen to go beyond fifty percent. Basically, the town employees were getting seventy-five percent. So the intent was to go to seventy-five, seventy-five twenty-five, seventy-five percent paid by the employer for surviving spouses. The town meeting article passed, but it was contingent on a ballot question, and there were two ballot questions. Ballot question number six was to go up to fifty percent, to pay fifty percent. Ballot question seven was to go over fifty percent. Ballot question six passed, seven failed. So there's been confusion as to how to implement what percent contribution for surviving spouses. A yes vote on ballot question three tomorrow will allow the town to continue to pay seventy-five percent contribution towards surviving spouse health insurance.
Thank you, Jim. Reason I asked Jim to give that explanation is, is that we've, we've been discussing that for some time, and I wouldn't understand it if I read it at this point. So we can blame the IC, we have at least one lawyer in our crowd, I'll blame, I'll blame lawyers for forcing us to write it in that fashion. You never get a break, do you? My job's complete, Jim, if I've offended one person. Moving next to weekly briefing, it's my great pleasure to present a certification and recognition of Dick Thomas. I see my, in your agenda, it's Richard Thomas. I'm gonna sit here and read this, and I, Dick, I put this together, and I tried to cover quite a few contributions you made to the town. And afterwards, I was in a meeting Friday morning, I was reminded that I probably left off three-quarters of the contributions you've made to town. But I'll give a chance to read this. It says, "On this, on the occasion of his retirement from the Harwich Real Estate and Open Space Committee, Harwich Trails Committee, Harwich Bike Ways Committee, and in recognition of the numerous additional communities activities Richard participated in and aided, we the Harwich Board of Selectmen do hereby proclaim, whereas Richard, Dick Thomas, to his friends, has been a long-standing member of the Harwich Trails, Bike Ways, Real State, and Open Space Committees, and having chaired each, and chaired them for a number of years, by the way, which is remarkable, since he also did all the minutes and the agenda and all the, all the hard work. Whereas Dick worked tirelessly to promote, healthy and environmental-friendly use of town land for hiking and bicycle riding, and Dick, you provided a great inspiration for others by biking to meetings. In fact, you embarrassed me, as I'd be driving in from about the same distance. Although, let me caution you to be careful when you're biking on the highway. Whereas Dick, I'm sorry, I keep interrupting my own proclamation. Whereas, whereas Dick was an early advocate for protection of open space, in conjunction with smart growth planning opportunities. Whereas Dick used his broad knowledge of town interests to provide vital input into the local comprehensive plan. Therefore, the board, the Harwich Board of Selectmen is proud to honor Dick on his retirement from the numerous town committees he has served for many years. We add our deep appreciation for his loyal service to the town. For perhaps most importantly, we thank Dick for his compassion, strength, and dignity, which he showed when advocating his positions, and his respectful manner in chairing and contributing to committee and town discussions. We wish to recognize Richard Thomas as a devoted citizen and friend of Harwich. We offer him our best wishes for his retirement, that his, for retirement that brings many years of good health, happiness, personal fulfillment, for Dick and for Lee. Dick will be missed, both professionally and as a friend to all those whose pleasures it's been to work with over the past years." And I'd like to hand you the ball. I do, I do think there may be some others who want to just make a quick comment as well, so I don't want to hog the stage.
I just wish I had done as much as you said I did. Thank you, Larry.
Dick, you did more.
Hello, my name's Brigitte. I'm the president of the East Harwich Community Association, and we would like to say that the association would like, would like to first thank the Board of Selectmen for recognizing one of our members with such a strong tribute this evening. And secondly, would like to publicly thank Dick and Lee for their incredible friendship and leadership. Dick Thomas was one of the individuals who founded the community association and was its first president for several years. His thoughtfulness and kindness have been the hallmarks of his leadership. His wife, Lee, shares his passion for all of the good projects and boards on which he has served. She has been a true partner, stalwart, critical, and courageous. Our loss, of course, will be Connecticut's gain. Having said that, Dick, if it is at all possible, please enjoy your time with your family, your healthy exercise, walking, biking, kayaking, and your intellectual curiosity. Then if there's some time left and something really worth your while, teach your new town what you have already taught us. When Dick and Lee Thomas come to town, good things will follow.
Thank you, Brigitte.
Mr. Waystack.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again, I'm Richard Waystack. I'm the new chairman of the Real Estate and Open Space Committee, and I didn't realize the shoes that I have to fill after Dick Thomas. Going through the minutes and the work that he has done over the last few years is voluminous, and I don't want to take too much time this evening, but suffice it to say that Mr. Thomas is so active in what he's done, he posted a memo today with his last few things that he wants us to take care of in his absence. So we will continue to do so, Dick, in the spirit in which you ran the committee. It is our great honor to have had you as a member of the Real Estate and Open Space Committee, and we wish you and Lee all the best in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard. Harwich is a great place to live.
So, Dick, will you be calling up, be sure that Richard follows up on his activities? Anything else for a weekly briefing? Move next to our public comment announcements. Linda, you want to cover the consent agenda?
There's a hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Yeah, I'm sorry, I have to move to the microphone so we can record you properly.
Hi, I'm Frank Tavano. I live at three forty-nine Great Western Road. A question for the board, have you discussed what your position will be in regards to the proposed Little League Field transfer, should the school committee choose to ignore the mandate slash demand that they received from town meeting last week?
At, at present, we're, we're hopeful and that the, the school board will work that out, the Montamo School Board will work that out. Our next step, we haven't discussed in detail because it gets into a lot of different legal manipulations on who has authority for what. Our, I think our effort at the moment has been to, whatever political influence we have, is to encourage the Montamo Regional School and the Harwich School, the school committees to separate that land out so it remains a Little League field.
Okay, 'cause that land was separated years and years and years ago, and that entire property was then purchased in nineteen sixty by an authorization of town meeting, I think it was Articles thirty-eight and thirty-nine, to purchase the land for recreation and open space. And then the following year, in special town meeting in nineteen sixty-one, town meeting authorized the transfer to the school department to build the new high school. So it, it should not require a lot of hoops to jump through to just separate that one little piece of land that really the school does not need.
I, I think we're all very hopeful at the moment that it's gonna be taken care of and to your liking.
Because they, they've been dragging their feet since February on this, and time is of the essence, as you know.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for a weekly briefing or our public comment? Linda, we'll move to consent agenda then.
All right. Mr. Chair, I move the following consent agenda. Approve minutes for April seventeenth, regular meeting, April thirtieth, regular meeting, our perambulation with Chatham, April twenty-third, regular meeting, April thirtieth, regular meeting, May seventh, executive session, May seventh, regular session. B, vote to hold public hearing on Beach Twenty-two for June eighteenth, two thousand and twelve. C, vote to accept the resignation of Richard Thomas from Real Estate and Open Space Bike Ways and Trails Committee, effective May eighth, two thousand and twelve. Vote to award a contract for Allen Harbor float bid to AGM Marine Contractors in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. Vote to award contract for emergency inverter system and new exterior lighting at Brooks Library to Systems Contracting Inc. in the amount of fifty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. Vote to sign agreement with the Animal Rescue League of Boston. Vote to hold a hearing on outside entertainment license for Cape Cod Clatta Inn, an Irish pub, for June fourth, two thousand and twelve. Vote to approve the two thousand and twelve annual general license renewals. Vote to approve a one-day entertainment license for wedding to be held at Winstead Inn and Beach Resort Harwich Port on June fifteenth, two thousand and twelve. And J, vote to approve second draft of contract for concept design for the community-centered project to Strukalowski Architects in the amount of forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion, Angelo?
Can we just have a brief discussion on G? Can we do that after we vote, just hold it for a second?
Hold on G, and how about any of the other items? If, if not, all in favor of holding the consent items with the exception of G? In favor of, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
As carried, and we'll move back now to G then. Angelo?
My concern is that all we have is a note saying that the people at the Clatta would like to have a public, us to have a public hearing. What we don't have is a license application, so I don't know what we're holding a public hearing on. I would appreciate if they would put together an application, and then we can discuss it and have a hearing, I think.
My, my understanding is, since they have a license now, and this is an amendment, they don't need to submit another application for that, but I can, I can confirm that. I asked that question when it came in.
If that's the case, that's fine with me, but I, I didn't think they had a license, an outdoor license.
Not, not an outdoor license, but they have an entertainment license. And since this amends it, we don't need that, we'll need a, you know, full public hearing on it, because, because obviously, we even have people tonight, we're not.
Mr. Chair.
Let me just add.
Yeah. Angelo, there is no outdoor entertainment license. Outdoor, indoor is a distinction we make in conditions that we put on the underlying license.
Well, what I'm asking for is to have a public hearing. What do they want? Is, do they want an outdoor license for twenty-four hours a day? One hour a day?
More details, yeah.
On a Monday? I, I don't, we don't know what they want. That's all I'm asking.
I realize that, but, and, and I think they will need to provide information well in advance of the hearing, or else we cancel the hearing if they don't, they can't show up at the hearing and present information and expect us to act on it. At that hearing, however, you know, at our direction, when they came in, the beginning of the year, we separated, we said we are only gonna deal with inside entertainment, come back later with outside, you know?
That's fine. If they provide, maybe I misspoke with asking for.
No, no, I think that's.
License, but I will take, I will take data, but we need it the Wednesday before June fourth.
I recall as well that we set the bar relatively high. We wanted the information that they were handling the indoor license correctly before we would consider an outdoor license, but, but that'll be the discussion at the public hearing.
May I suggest that we ask Mr. Miriam to send a letter to the owners of the Clatta and explaining that, you know, if we hold the public hearing, that we, he has a dead, they have a deadline for getting the information in as to what it is they're looking for, the conditions, et cetera, for the amendment to their license, so we actually have something to look at, as well as the public has something to look at. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, since this isn't a public hearing on that item.
Fair enough. I think you've actually addressed the concern that I was here to raise in, in getting some more information.
Yeah.
You did set the bar pretty high at numerous other.
Right, and we need to follow up on that now.
Yeah. I have one other question that I'm here for and have an interest in too, in regards to consent agenda, item B. And I don't know if you can elaborate anymore on the nature of the public hearing that you voted to hold, and what we can expect to occur at that hearing, so we can be prepared for it?
We had a short meeting with, help me out with the names, Jim, but there, what, what they wanted to do was, was to discuss on Beach Twenty-two, providing, keeping the access available as, as requested from all the neighbors. And mainly, what they wanted to do was to remove the sign from the website that that was a public beach. Their feeling was that they were drawing, because it was advertised on the websites of Town Beach and other places, they were drawing out-of-town places, people there that were parking, and it should be restricted to the neighborhood, if not restricted, at least not advertised. And so their, their requests are fairly minor, but it'll be discussed more detail at the public hearing.
Okay, but generally limited to whether or not the, the beach would be listed on the website as a public and accessible?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, in the end, they, you know, it's been a lot of back and forth, but the big discussion was one of access, how we advertise accessibility. You know, that's been relatively recent, I think that's been added to the website as, as a Town Beach.
Okay.
And they saw that as a, as a major problem, that, that advertisement.
Okay. And getting back to the other issue, did, was it the Wednesday before the hearing the deadline will be for submission of application materials, or whatever, more specifics regarding the request for the outdoor entertainment license? Is that what I heard?
We need it by, by Thursday noon.
Okay. And we would have the opportunity, obviously, to inspect those items before the hearing as well?
You will, and everyone else, because we put all that stuff on our website now.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Which, Thursday noon?
Thursday noon.
Be this Thursday, Wednesday, was scheduled for.
June fourth.
June fourth.
June fourth, and so a week, week from Thursday then, right?
Week from Thursday, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good question, thank you. Any other comments on?
Yeah, May twenty-fourth.
Well, it, it will be.
Did I have my calendar wrong?
It will be published in the, on May twenty-fourth, so their material needs to be available on the day of publication.
It'll be in our binder, right? Be, has to be available in our binder.
It will be in our binder conceivably until May thirty-first, which is the, the Thursday before our meeting, the, the meeting where it's being heard at. But typically, if you're having a public hearing, the material that's subject to the public hearing has to be available when you notice the public hearing, which would be the twenty-fourth.
Okay. Okay. Did you, I was wrong, Mr. Chair, did you get that then, May twenty, twenty-first? This one has to be available?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, one has to be available?
And Jim, you got that?
Yes, I do.
Do you want to move ahead with G then?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item G.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving then to public hearings. First public hearing is a, is a hearing to discuss and, and that'd be a great idea.
Town of Harwich, notice a public hearing amend beach rules and regulations. The Harwich Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twelve, no earlier than seven PM in the Donby Griffin Room at Town Hall, seven thirty-two Main Street, to consider amending the Harwich Beach Rules and Regulations to allow all beach parking lot areas to be closed from ten PM until six AM. All interested parties are invited to attend.
Jim, is Chief Mason, or is?
He's, he's in the back row.
Are you going to start this discussion, chief, or is?
Thank you very much. I didn't know if I was going to speak on this one, or if the Rec Commission was going to speak on this one, but it's, it's a pretty simple request, as you know, that we had the Bank Street Beach Improvement Team that worked very diligently to address certain issues that were occurring down at the beach. And one of the things that was the concern was the closing hours of the beach parking lot. Currently, the hours are at ten o'clock, or, excuse me, are at midnight, as the beach itself closes at midnight, from midnight to six. And what they were hoping and wanted to do was to get those hours changed so that the parking lot was closed from ten PM to six AM. That ends up being a good tool for the police department. We are not interested in kicking out the person that is down there taking a leisurely stroll on the beach and/or out fishing or what have you. That is not the purpose. The purpose is, is if we have large groups of people in the parking lot, where, that are causing problems and what have you, to be able to have a little bit of enforcement effort. There are rules behind us that we can say, hey, the parking lot closes at ten o'clock, you're creating an undue disturbance or noise down here for the neighbors, you're gonna need to leave, and have some teeth behind it to allow us to do so. And that was the purpose of this.
And I did talk to John Mahan this morning. His daughter is celebrating the National Honor Society Award tonight, so he.
Excellent.
He thought that was more important than, than coming here, and of course, he's, he's correct. I would, and he pointed out the same thing you did, it gives you a tool for better enforcement if needed. He also pointed out that it's not precedent setting, Dennis follows the same rules on their beaches now, of the parking lot closing before the beach does, for the, and I imagine for the very, for the very same reasons.
As a matter of fact, Dennis has gone, on some of the beaches, has gone even further, and at ten o'clock, they go and lock steel gates that cross the parking lot entrances, and if you happen to be stuck in there, you could have some difficulties trying to get back out.
Yeah. Good thing we don't live in Dennis.
And, and we, we don't, the, the task force did not, the improvement team did not want to go to that extent whatsoever. What we wanted to do is, again, to just have a tool to be able to keep, keep some control over that parking lot, 'cause quite frequently, the noise level do not rise to disturbance as far as the statute or even our new town bylaw that just was recently passed. What it does, though, is it gives us a little bit of teeth to get people to move on if they need to move.
Dave Purdy, you were, I guess, one of the leaders of the neighborhood. You want to speak to this at all, or you?
Yeah, thank you. I don't have anything really to add, except that with the chief and my wife, we did attend the Recreation Commission meeting, and they approved of it. A question I have, however, is, will there be, will there be a sign at the beach parking lot saying that the parking lot closes at ten o'clock? It would seem to me that would only be fair to people who might not know if indeed the regulation, if indeed the time has changed.
I, I'd have to check. I know, again, my discussion with John this morning, he was assuming we'd copy the, the type of sign that Dennis has.
Yeah.
And put that out. But Jim, do you have any, there's no reason not to, right?
Obviously, to enforce it, we need to change the sign.
I don't even know if there's a sign there, you know, right at the entrance to the beach now. There isn't, I don't think, but somewhere, there's a, there's a sign with regulations about dogs and one thing, and the other way down at the end of the beach, way down at the end of the parking lot where the beach begins, but this really doesn't relate to the beach as such, it relates to the parking lot. So probably right on the corner there, or somewhere fairly visible to someone driving down there, it would say that the parking lot is closed from ten to whatever the hours in the morning.
I see the chief shaking his head as well, so that seems to be an obvious next step.
Yes, in order for it to be effective, it does have to be posted, you have to provide fair notice. One of the other things that the Harwich Police Department does routinely, and that's also on disturbances, as a matter of fact, we wrote it right into the bylaw, that the officers try to get voluntary compliance first, and voluntary compliance is by contacting the people that are involved, notifying them that the, of the regulation or the bylaw violation, and attempting to get them to cease and desist voluntarily and leave. It's only when those efforts fail that you go into the enforcement mode. So this isn't, this isn't designed to try to increase arrests or citation issuing or anything like that at all. It's basically just to get control of what's going on in the areas.
Yeah, okay. I believe, Mr. Gentlemen, as well, want, did you want to speak as well?
I probably should have spoke first. Frank Crowley, I'm Vice Chair of the Rec Commission. At a meeting on March seventeenth, the Commission voted to amend Rule Seventeen, and I'll read it briefly. All beaches and parking lots are closed from midnight until eight AM. We want to amend that to read, all beach parking lot areas are closed from ten AM until six AM. All beaches are closed from midnight to six AM. And, and we, this was done after a great deal of discussion, and we've heard quite a few complaints, mainly from the Bank Street area, which have been a problem for years. And we think closing the beaches a little extra early would probably relieve that problem. And as far as signs go, it's a simple matter of changing the signs. Now, we think that we can just ink over what the current signs we now have. And it's also, the rules are in our brochures, which will be printed up soon, and from what I'm hearing tonight, we will probably wait to the last minute, because there's, there are other issues, such as dogs on the beach and so forth, which are also in our brochures.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you.
If I could, ask a question of Frank. In, in the Commission's discussion, what was the reasoning for the distinction between the differing hours?
Oh, you mean closing at ten as opposed to twelve? Well, we, we tossed about, you know, discussed the hours nine o'clock, or closing just Bank Street, which we didn't think that was possible, because the kids would just go to some other beach, and, and we, we did look at all the other towns, and I understand mostly all towns in the Cape, nobody's open until twelve midnight, and we thought ten o'clock would be a reasonable hour. We had complaints from the motel owners in the area, and some guests said they just weren't coming back to the motel because of the noise level there late at night. So we thought probably ten o'clock would be a reasonable hour, we can, you know, start with that and see what happens.
Okay, but you, you, you have the, the parking lot closes at ten, but the beach is open till twelve.
That's right. The problem was mainly cars in, in the Bank Street area. We felt if we could get the cars out of there, you know, maybe things would be okay. Music coming from the car radios and so forth.
Did the Commission have a concept of where people would park who wanted to be on the beach from ten to twelve?
Uh, no.
Because around all of our beaches, virtually all of the streets, there's no parking on the side streets.
That's right, they're dead ends.
Who knows?
No, we didn't really get into that, we just.
I mean, it, you know, so somebody, somebody comes down at nine and parks and finds, and understands he can stay on the beach until twelve, but at ten, he's gotta come off the beach and, and move his car someplace.
My understanding is, through the police department, maybe Chief Mason, 'cause I think he's already spoke to that, we're really not interested in hassling people, it's mainly given the police some, some ability to say, if you are causing problems on the beach, you'll, you'll have to leave and move at ten o'clock. on the beach, you'll, you'll have to leave and move at o'clock. It's a start to see, you know, where we might go from here.
Yeah, Angelo, I have a question. This is all beaches. Does this mean all public beaches, or all beaches in Harwich?
Public beaches. One's covered by our regulations. We're parking, we're using parking, yes.
Then I think the rule has to be modified to put the word "public" in, in front of the word "beaches."
Well, Angelo, it's, if you, the second page of this is the Town Beach Rules and Regulations.
Town Beach Rules and Regulations.
Okay, I'm just reading from here.
Right, well, that's...
It says Rule seventeen.
Yep, which is right. So it's all beach, so it's really just the town.
Yeah, as long as it's, as long as it's clear.
Town beaches.
Okay. But I understand, uh, Mr. McManus' question. If I want to go to Bank Street Beach between ten and twelve for whatever reason, and I live on Lower County Road, I can't, I can't get there. I don't have any way of parking. So in essence, you, you're closing the beach to me for those two hours. I don't know if that's a problem or not, but it's...
I'm not sure if that'll be a problem or not. Really can't tell.
I, I think we need to try and see, because...
Try and, you know, see how it works out.
The intent is to give the tool, not, and, and I think to see if it works.
I understand the police will not be bothering people unless there is a problem.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Well, personally, I have a problem with that. I mean, if you're, if you're closing the parking lot, you're closing the parking lot, and anybody who's in it gets a ticket. But to say, well, you, we're only closing the parking lot if we think you're gonna cause or you are causing a problem, I mean, that's what we call selective enforcement, and, you know...
Chief?
I understand what Mr. McManus says, is saying, and I have to agree to him with, uh, some extent. However, according to Massachusetts General Law, the speed limit is posted at thirty miles an hour, and that's what you have to travel. So therefore, if you're doing thirty-one in a thirty, you can theoretically be stopped and get a citation for it. However, our Police Department does not do that. That's part of it that's called discretion. Um, so what we do is, is, again, we wanted to try this to see, and again, the majority of the time, we get voluntary compliance, the vast majority of the time. All we're looking for is to have something that if it does not rise to a disturbance level, but we are getting complaints from residents of our motel rooms and our hotel rooms and our citizens that live in the area because of the excessive noise, we have something to call back on saying, the beach parking lots do close at ten o'clock. You will need to leave because you're creating a noise issue for the neighbors that live in the area or residing in the area. That's what we're after.
Any more, uh, discussion? Yes, please.
This has to have "Town" in front of it.
Town, it says Town Beach Rules and Regulations.
Chief, you're, you're speaking in theories in regards to the thirty mile an hour and somebody going thirty-one. What if somebody has parked in the beach parking lot after the specified time? The department gets a call from a neighbor, says, hey, there's a car in the parking lot. There's something going on down there. You need to get down. You send a cruiser down, they respond, find the car, find the people that own it, nothing going on. Okay, okay, that's fine. Twenty minutes later, you get another phone call from that same neighbor. Hey, that car's still down there. They're still causing a problem down there. And you respond a second time, possibly even a third time. How are you gonna handle that with that neighbor? Or not with the neighbor necessarily, but with that person that's still on the beach that's not causing a problem.
I cannot speak to, uh, have a hard and fast rule for what is going to, going to or not occur. However, in the twelve years I've been here, we have never gone down to the beach and harassed somebody on the beach that was ju, even if they're past the midnight curfew and, and gone after them. I, I checked our records to see what we, what we have done, and, and that has not been the case. And, and when you talk to the Parks and Rec Commission on it, they, they've never gotten a complaint from, uh, from, to the Parks and Rec Commission for the Police Department or anybody else, to my knowledge, of doing anything like that. Again, this is for dealing with the large crowds that have a tendency to gather on the beaches la, or on the beach parking lots late in the evenings. That's what we're trying to accomplish and go after. I understand what the issues are, but the theory is, is, and is, uh, is, uh, Mr. Tavano has brought out, the theory is absolutely, there is discretion. No matter how many times somebody complains that somebody is doing thirty-one in a thirty mile an hour zone, I will tell you that our Police Department will not be issuing a citation for somebody doing thirty-one in a thirty. So it'd be the same thing, same theory, I would think, would apply down there. No matter how many times somebody complains about somebody parking in, in the beach parking lot at that particular time of night, if they're not causing a problem down there, why in the world would the Police Department want to hassle them?
Yeah, Linda?
Uh, I'm not sure that hassle them is the correct terminology for enforcing the rules. I, I'm with you, Ed. You either have a rule or you don't. So if the parking lot is closing at ten and there is a car parked there, I would think that the, if somebody complains about it or notices it, I would think that the police would just cruise by and say, you know, I'm sorry, you're going to have to leave. The parking lot is closed at ten. And, and it would seem that, because if you're not going to enforce this kind of a rule, then why are we bothering having one? So I understand discretion, Bill, very much, but it would seem that i, i, if we're gonna do selective enforcement, then that's gonna get us in trouble too, because then it's gonna be, you're, you're picking on the kids, or you're, you're doing this, or you're doing that, and then we're gonna hear about that one. So either you have a rule or you don't. So I would hope that we would enforce this closing at ten and not be too discretionary about it. Ten is ten.
One, one of the issues that we run into are there are people that go down to the beach to go fishing at night. And, uh, so they might get down there at eight, eight-thirty at night, and they've got their line cast out in the water, and they're, they're losing. So I, I would not really want to take police resources to go wandering up and down the beach trying to locate the owner of a vehicle.
Then just ticket the car.
Ticket the car.
I, uh, yeah, go ahead, please.
As a neighbor, I cannot imagine calling the police because there's a car parked in the parking lot after ten. The only reason we call is because of the obscene screaming, yelling, carrying on. After ten o'clock, it's a nightmare there. I invite any of you to come down and live where we do and listen to what we put up with. There was a young man whom my daughter was calling out the window, please be quiet. My children are trying to sleep. She was yelled at with F U's. The guy pulled his pants down, defecated in the street, under the lamp post, and just continued on his harass. Our grandchildren are listening to this. We're paying nine thousand dollars a year for taxes on our house to put up with this garbage, and I am fed up with it. And there's no reason any of us neighbors would call simply because there was a car parked in the parking lot after ten. We only call when there is obscenity and routiness and drug dealing. We've had our house egged when we call the police. I am fed up with it, and I don't see why this little request of ten o'clock closing is too much to ask.
Uh, Ed?
I don't have any problem with the ten o'clock closing, but if you're gonna close at ten o'clock, you're gonna close at ten o'clock, and it applies to everybody. Because if you set a precedent allowing some in and others not, you're not gonna solve the problem. People are gonna continue to coming down there thinking they can get away with it. And then, you know, they have a beer, and then it's ten-thirty, and they're screaming. So if either we're closing it or we're not. And if you keep the beaches open till, till twelve, then you're saying, well, you have a reason to come down here because the beach is still open. So we oughta close the beaches at ten also, so there is no inducement for people to come down and be in that parking lot after ten o'clock. With a car.
You know, they're good points. I, I'm gonna side with the recommendations that were made as the, as a, and give that a try. I, I know there's some questions on that, but it is a tool of enforcement. Uh, I think it's a reasonable, uh, reasonable thing to go forward and see and, and give it a try. So I'm, I, I'm gonna have opposing views, I guess, to my fellows, uh, select people, but, uh, they spend a lot of time trying to work out this resolution to this noise problem, and, uh, I'd like, I'd like to argue for it. Dave?
Just for the record, that was my wife that spoke previously.
I know.
I, I know you knew, but for the listening audience at home, or the viewing audience at home, uh, the, one of the things that the Rec Commission sort of wrestled with is the fact that there are motels on the beach. So if you close the beach at ten o'clock, that means that people who are on, you know, staying in those motels, which are right on the beach, can't, uh, access the beach. I mean, they can, they can walk or, or, uh, do whatever they're gonna do on the beach in the private, uh, area of that motel perhaps, but the, the thought was that they, I, I don't wanna talk for the recreation, but as I heard the discussion, I was there that evening, they wanted to sort of provide access for people who lived there or who were renting there or paying good money to be on the beach for, um, for vacation purposes. So that was kind of the, the reason they didn't, uh, I, I think that was the reason not to close the beaches earlier than the twelve o'clock, um, so that if someone wanted to walk down, walk on the beach, perfectly fine. But some way in which the police could have teeth to enforce, uh, complaints about noise and other kinds of, um, antisocial and even perhaps illegal behavior in the parking lot, not just the Bank Street parking lot, but of course, that's what created this discussion in the first place, but Red River Beach and some of the other places that I've heard about some, since then, also having difficulty with some of the same kinds of, uh, noise and disturbances and so on. So, I mean, that, that's part of the conflict between closing the beach at, at, you know, ten o'clock and closing the parking lot at ten. Uh, it, it means that technically, anybody on the beach after ten o'clock could be fined or arrested and, you know, it, I mean, that's almost a, with all due respect, if someone calls the police and says, there's someone on the beach at ten o'clock, you gotta go get him off the beach. I mean, that, it's nonsense, just like my wife said. It's nonsense that a neighbor's gonna call because of the car parked in the parking lot at ten o'clock at night. It's only, the neighbors only call the police when there's a problem. In fact, every time I've called the police, I apologize to the dispatcher for calling because I say, I know you've got more important things to do. You know, I'm, I'm sure there's been an accident somewhere, there's a fire somewhere, there's only a couple of patrol cars on duty to cover the whole town. I know that, and I feel terrible about having to call and ask you guys to run down there. And they'll often say, always call, never apologize, always call. We may not be able to get there at, you know, instantaneously because of other things going on in the community. So I think most of us neighbors have used discretion on this, and I don't think the police are gonna be getting phone calls from neighbors or motel owners complaining about a car that might be parked down there unless beer bottles are being thrown and obscenities are being yelled and other kinds of things are going on. It could be one car and ten bicycles, and it's still the same problem. I mean, so...
Angelo?
Just a question. Focus has been on the nighttime closing. Did anybody discuss the morning opening? And the reason I ask is, by the way, if you're wandering around at five o'clock in the morning, the sun's up or coming up, and there are people who want to wander around on the beach and watch the sunrise, particularly on the sound, uh, is there any reason that can't be five o'clock? I mean, it, it, it strikes me as that it, it doesn't matter, but there, you see, the reason I'm bringing it up is I happen to agree with Ed. We're gonna pass a rule. It needs to be a rule. And, and we would hope that the police don't need to be invited to the beach to give someone a ticket or ask them to leave. If it's a rule, you stay off the beach, and there's a sign there, and if the police find you there, and they give you the ticket or fine or whatever i, it happens to be. But otherwise, we, we run into a very, I think, a very difficult situation of, of forcing the, the poor officer to, to make all sorts of judgments of whether this person's here for a legitimate reason or not a leg, if he's there, it's a problem. Uh, it, it's much simpler, I think. It'd make life a lot easier for, for you. If he's not there, he's not there. But I, I would ask, uh, because I, I, I don't know why they pick six o'clock, but there may very well be a reason. But if there isn't, we should look at, we should look at it going the other way.
This has historically been six o'clock. I go back about thirty years on the Beach Committee or the Rec Commission, and there's no reason, I'm sure we would have no problem with five o'clock if you so choose to.
Well, no, I'm just asking if that's a more appropriate time. I mean, I, I don't wanna go all over. I, I would like somebody to think about it. Just because we've been doing this since six o'clock, gee, that's terrific, but, so what's the rationale for six?
It's always been that way, I guess.
Chief?
Needless to say, during this period of time, I've done a lot of records checking just to see the types of enforcement and the issues that are going on down there. We, we, on occasions, will get calls from neighbors where they'll say there's a group of people in the parking lot, and it's not just at Red River or Bank Street, it's other beaches as well, where they will call. And when the officer gets there, the, the, it, it is a group of individuals that are just talking. They're not throwing beer bottles. They're not creating a disturbance. They're not fighting. They're not yelling. They don't have their stereos cranked up or any of the other things that would inject either our new bylaw or Mass General Law for disturbances. So what it amounts to is they're just talking. However, with people having their windows open at night, et cetera, et cetera, that ends up being a disturbance to them because they can't sleep when all these people are doing is just talking. The purpose of the ten o'clock is for those people, those people that are just talking. And again, the vast majority of the time, we ask them to leave and they leave. It's just very rare that somebody will say, point to the sign and say, well, according to the sign, the parking lot is open until midnight, and it's now eleven forty-five. We still have fifteen more minutes that we can be here, or whatever it amounts to. That's the purpose of it. I understand exactly what you're saying, but I, I have to, I have to rely on my officers to use some kind of good, reasonable discretion. If it, and, and as I, as I said, it's very rare that we ever have to get to the enforcement stands, but every now and then, somebody wants to be a knucklehead.
Ed?
I, I just don't see, you know, how you're going to show up at, at eleven o'clock and deal with a, a group of people that are just talking or being noisy and ask them to leave and, and have them point at everybody else who's parked there and say, why us and not them? The issue is the noise they're making, so the rule should be about the noise, not about being there.
But the problem that we run into is that not all noise is illegal. You have to go into the constitutionality of freedom of speech, uh, freedom, right to gather, et cetera, et cetera. And so with those in mind, um, I, 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 if somebody is carrying on a conversation, it could be anything under the sun, it could be, um, a political discussion, it could be a discussion about the best soup recipe, it could be anything under the sun that they might be talking about at that particular, particular point. Um, but it's creating a, it is creating a noise issue, and I can't say a disturbance because it hasn't crossed that threshold. That's the problem I'm running into. I understand exactly, and, and if you decide that you, you want us to strictly enforce the ten o'clock, then we'll strictly enforce the ten o'clock. What my proposal would be, though, is opposed to writing everybody tickets, which I don't think is good for public relations, that we, if, if, if that's the way we're gonna do it, is that we at least give a warning to the first time.
I don't have any problem with you giving a warning or showing up and, and saying, but when you show up, you gotta tell everybody to leave.
Yeah, I think that's the only point we're trying to make, right, Ed? Is, is that when you show up, everybody has to leave 'cause it's after ten o'clock. You can't be selective about it because one group is talking and one person is, and one group is reading a book. You, you gotta enforce whatever... enforce whatever the rule is.
Right now, this very moment, with the midnight to six o'clock rule as it stands at this current point, we will have patrol officers that will go through the parking lot of Red River Beach, and I probably shouldn't say this, but they use their discretion, and if somebody is sitting there just watching the waves come in, and they're not creating any noise or any disturbance, they're left alone.
Well, if they do it right now, that's fine, because it's not Memorial Day yet. But, you know.
My argument would be, again, and I guess opposed, but, you know, the neighborhood group and the chief spent, and department spent a lot of time trying to reach a compromise and a decision that would give them the tools to enforce the noise. I'd like to go ahead and move ahead with that, but we'll see. Is there a...
And if you wanna enforce it against the noise, then write the rule about the noise.
Well, we just had a discussion on some difficulties with that.
And that's the problem, so, you know.
But don't, I think we need to remember what started this whole discussion, and we're trying to solve this problem, and, you know, the world's not perfect. But, yes, sir. But we've disagreed before, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. Let me introduce myself. My name is John Fraz, fifty Braddock Lane. I'm also the president of the Homeowners Association on Braddock Lane. I represent approximately twenty-five families. We have a goal that is to do basically with the safety, security, parking, zoning, and other things that might affect the neighborhood. And with those in mind, we support the town of Howard on these and other matters as they may arise. We've been together for about twenty-eight years. It's an old organization. I've only been in it, I've been the president the last several. Our biggest concern and our biggest complaint from, from the neighbors and from the people in the association, and I have not had a chance to poll them, by the way, we have one meeting a year, and then a little follow-up in the fall, we have a get-together, is we all have stories of how we've been treated rudely or someone arrogantly, and we know that Fridays and Saturday nights, you don't even want, don't even wanna walk on or even drive down Bank Street, and there's a short distance from the end of Braddock Lane as you go into Bank Street parking area. More than once, and I bike, and a lot of people in the neighborhood bike, and it's, our car will come flying up over the hill. If they slam on their brakes to miss you, it's not unusual for them to flip you the bird, or say something else. So we all have had these situations. I'm going to say, for our association, we support anything that you might do to help improve things in the area. I'm also a small landlord, and it's the biggest complaint and fear of my tenants is the distance from twenty-eight down to the beach. As we know, there's no sidewalks or anything, it's a deadly wall, and we, I just really predict someday we'll have an awful tragedy there. So I would say, I certainly support this and say to give it a try, and see how it flushes out. And if there's anything we can do, we have a very small budget, I think it's less than a thousand dollars, but I was talking to the secretary tonight, and we were gonna propose to the, our membership, would they, maybe we could come up with some funds to contribute to either a flashing sign or anything else that might help. We don't have a lot, but we would give what we could. So I thank you for what you do, and I wanted you to know what our thoughts were. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? If not, you wanna close the public hearing?
Sure. I'd move we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Is there a motion or an action on this, on the recommendation?
I'm sorry, we just missed it. We just closed the public hearing, so, but I think we've got the gist of what the discussions are at this point.
I, I, I would like to move that we accept the recommendation of the Recreation Committee with two caveats, that the enforcement be equal to anyone breaking the regulations, is one, and two, that, and this is not imperative, but somebody does check the six o'clock hour, it's not part of this whole issue, and I don't wanna hold up the important part for a minor piece, but just check to make sure that, is there a good reason for doing it at six and not a little earlier? The fishermen down there is too early in the morning, there's no reason for that. That's it. Do you have a second?
Just, could we have a friendly amendment to that?
Sure.
That we have a report back from the chief, say, early August, as to how things are going down there, a follow-up report. Will you accept a friendly?
Certainly.
And I'll second the motion.
Say more discussion?
Well, just a question, so where does that leave us on the issue of five o'clock?
Well, it's gonna be six now unless they come back and change it to five.
Okay.
I mean, I, I'm just questioning it, I don't have any data to, other than Easter sunrise, Easter sunrise services and people fishing early in the morning, that's the only piece I have.
It's like four AM.
It's, it's too, too ethereal to figure out when sunrise is, and then you have people arguing, you're after sunrise, before sunrise. It's easy to look at a clock, I think.
Do you think that perhaps we ought to, your, I do agree with that, I think your motion says, you know, it could be this, could be that, so how about we tighten the motion up and we accept the parking lot, you know, ten o'clock to six AM?
That's what my motion said.
But you had the caveat in there.
No, I said I just wanted them to look at it.
Okay.
Just wanted them to examine it.
I think that's appropriate. If we wanted to tighten up my mind, we could leave it to their, if the Rec Commission, for instance, both moved to five, we could, we could approve that in advance, and so it's, it's left in their hands at this point, because I think we're sort of indifferent whether it's five or six. Frank, would that be?
Would be available to the Rec Commission, I'm sure.
Angela, is that?
That's fine.
That gets it to, ends that discussion in a reasonable way, and we can move forward then. Because your deadline, in any case, is to get it done before the guide comes out. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Chief Mason. You were gonna give us a brief discussion on the, on the final report. And by the way, I did want to, not did, I do, this is active chance, right, I do wanna compliment you on, and the neighborhood associations and the Rec group for the, the good dialogue you had on this, on the Bank Street problems. Feedback I get is that it was a good and productive dialogue.
Thank you. I can't tell you how much I appreciate the support of both the Highway Department, the Rec Department, the citizens and the business owners in the area, because this was truly a collaborative effort, and it ended up being very productive. And I think we've got a good plan to try to rectify a lot of the situations that occur down there, many of which we've already put in place and implemented. The Bank Street Beach Team was formed to address these public concerns, and it was to enhance the ability to use the beach in a, in a positive and productive manner. And some of this, some of our activities and things that we're changing are applying to the other beaches in town as well. So I think all in all, this whole thing is, has gotten to get the police department and the community to look at our beaches as more of an asset, and to really protect them and to appreciate them and make them a much higher priority than maybe what they were considered in the past. The proposal that we came up with has basically nine, nine recommendations. The first proposal was to amend the town bylaw on noise, which was successfully done at the annual town meeting last week. The second request that came out of it is that they thought that the more visible presence of the police in the area, especially performing car stops, would add greatly to reducing some of the issues that are on. I have with me Sergeant Kevin Constine, who runs the traffic and part of the patrol, and he can assure you that this has already been implemented, and a lot more stops and citations, et cetera, have been issued down there. Since this group has started, we're planning on continuing that, to try to keep a much stronger eye on the beach, the beach is, to make sure that we don't run into these issues again. Speed limit, we were checking on the speed limit down there, and we were all under the assumption that it was a thickly settled area in a thirty mile an hour speed limit zone, which is what it normally would be under today's current conditions. However, we did, again, Sergeant Constine did some research and found out that in fact, prior to the current traffic system that is in place, which would have that listed as a thirty mile an hour speed limit zone, it had been put down to a twenty mile an hour speed limit zone and had been voted as such, and for some reason, one of the signs had ended up missing out of there. And lo and behold, that's a grandfathered twenty mile an hour zone. I wanna make sure that people understand that that is a grandfathered twenty mile an hour zone. We would have the right to raise it to thirty miles an hour, but we wouldn't have the right to go to any other area and reduce it to twenty miles an hour, so I wanna make sure that that's real clear. But we have ended up reposting that as the traffic rules and orders have it listed and added an additional twenty mile an hour zone sign down there, and we have been running speed studies down there for enforcement purposes as well. The restrooms, there was a suggestion, and there was a lot of discussion, and this is back in the ballpark of the Youth and Rec Commission, to shut the restrooms at a much earlier time, but that's a dual edged sword. If we have people using the beaches until ten o'clock, twelve o'clock at night, and the restrooms are not open, and nature does make a calling, then they have a tendency to use other resourceful methodologies of dealing with the matter. So we have to sit here and weigh out whether or not it is advisable to shut the restrooms or not. And so that one is still in some discussion as to whether or not, which way we should go with that particular one. The thoughts are, though, is that we do have some volunteers, because we have no resources to actually physically go down there and lock those bathrooms, but we do have neighbors that are stepping forward that are willing to go out and lock up the bathrooms for us, and then when the crews come through in the morning picking up the trash, then they would open them back up. So those, but that one is still one that we're working on and weighing the pros and cons of the calls of nature. Beach patrols, until two thousand and five, we had, we were receiving large amounts of community policing grant monies, and one of the things we did with that community policing grant monies is we actually ran beach patrols, regular, organized beach patrols on a regular basis. And a lot of the issues that Bank Street and some of the other beaches were facing when those beach patrols were in place, didn't occur just simply because of the presence of police on there on a regular basis. At one time, we were as high as a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year on community policing grant money. Right now, we are at zero. So we have lost basically that ability to do those types of patrols because of the funding. We applied for a five thousand dollar grant to re-implement part of the beach patrol program that we had in the past. However, there was a lot of demands for that money throughout the state and very short funding on it, and our grant application was denied. It wasn't because of anything that we failed to provide, they just thought that there were other things that were more pressing. So one of the recommendations was a supplement to the overtime account to allow us to do a directed beach patrol down there, which would be a dedicated beach patrol for not only the Bank Street Beach, but the other beaches during selected periods of time. We estimated the cost of that to be about five thousand dollars to run that, and that beach patrol would not just be for Bank Street, we would also run it on the other beaches as well. Obviously, Bank Street would be getting part of that attention, though. Recommendation number six, or item number six that we were looking at, was for slowing up traffic to go to the speed bumps or speed humps, and there was a lot of discussion, the Highway Department weighed in on this one, also the Fire Department weighed into it because of the movement of emergency vehicles through there, snowplows, et cetera, and also about doing the curbing that used to be in Bank Street Beach, right along the entranceway there, which had been removed, and that was largely because of snowplow activities and also the movement of emergency vehicles through those parking lots, and damage that was done to vehicles during snowstorms when you couldn't see those curb lines or those curb humps, because they were covered with snow, and then people would accidentally drive over them and damage their vehicles. So for all those reasons, the, the group evaluated and elected to say that speed humps and speed bumps and putting that curbing back in was not a good idea at this time, and so that one, we decided to go away. We just discussed recommendation number seven, which was the parking lot closing. The last recommendation number eight dealt with adding some additional light, and they were looking at possibly a motion-activated light around the restrooms, and we estimate that the cost of that would be a right around a thousand dollars to put those in. Obviously, we'd have to make them somewhat vandal proof, and so that would be a challenge to do that, but I think it is possible that that could be done, but there would be a slight amount of cost to that. Recommendation number nine was video surveillance, and the police department has implemented this. We have purchased two additional high-resolution cameras that we are using not only for the beaches at, during those times, but we're also using them up in the Punkhorns and other places where we're having dumping issues, where we're having fishing violation issues, drug issues, et cetera. So those, those cameras have been purchased and are currently deployed, so those are out and running as well. But those were the nine recommendations or the nine considerations of the, of the beach task force, of the improvement team, and I'm bringing them forward to the Board of Selectment for their consideration.
Do we have the budget for additional cameras?
Do I have them?
Yeah, I mean, is there money for additional cam, video cameras?
I don't have it in my budget. We did some, we did some very creative verbiage and understanding that we were using these cameras for possible narcotic surveillance, and so therefore, we were able to use some drug forfeiture money to purchase them. Otherwise, we did not have the money in our budget in order to do that.
Angela?
Surveillance keeps on coming up, I think maybe we have to look into finding some money. But I just have a question on something, a comment you made. Why would we be plowing the parking lots with their covered with snow, with the beach? It would strike, it would strike me that, that'd be the last place you'd send your snowplows, and it'd also keep people out of there, and if, did you close it when it was more than three or four inches of snow, it'd solve another problem. I have no idea why we were plowing.
I didn't think you were plowing the parking lots, I thought it was the streets going to the parking lots.
Well, streets are one thing, the parking lots are another.
Chief?
From what I understand, and I do not mean to speak for the Highway Department, from what I understand from the Highway Department, they, when they, when they do, particularly Bank Street, they will go down Bank Street and they go into that parking lot, and they plow out a chunk of the parking lot, because that's what they use to turn their trucks around and go back up the street.
That's a different story, I'm sorry. I was envisioning that they were plowing the entire parking lot. Ed?
Well, that was the point. You, you have to plow virtually all the way to the sand to provide access to that last motel, and then you gotta turn around somewhere, you know, it isn't like you plow, plow a big chunk.
Somebody told me you're plowing the parking lot.
Occasionally, when it gets real bad, we actually fill the parking lot up with snow, as a place to let it melt off when we have to
That's fine.
clear the commercial areas. But as to, you know, I can understand the problems with putting the curbing and... and the stop bars in the parking lot. But I think, you know, if you wanted to be serious about controlling speed on Bank Street, there are speed hump designs that present no problem to streets sweeping that are gradual enough that I don't believe you would have a problem with a plow using it, because especially on Bank Street, you're only having small plows go, you know, the smaller trucks. And those plows all have spring loads on the front, so they rise up and over impediments in the roadway. And, you know, given this, given the length, an emergency vehicle, an ambulance, or a fire truck, if they couldn't race from twenty-eight to the end of the beach at sixty miles an hour, and they had to only go twenty, it adds about twenty seconds to the time. I mean, you know, there's a limit to how fast you can get a vehicle up in that distance. And so I think that should be significantly looked at.
I was partially going on the previous recommendations of the Board of Selectmen on this particular issue, because one of the things that historically has come up repetitively, requested in virtually every neighborhood, every beach approach, every commercial area, et cetera, et cetera, deals with speed. And why can't we not put in speed humps and speed bumps? Speed humps and speed bumps, well, not speed bumps, but speed humps, are a cost factor. And I do not know what kind of criteria the board would want to set. And that's surely their discretion, and I don't have an objection to the speed hump. As a matter of fact, I've been through, in this process, I've visited several communities that do use speed humps, just to see how they worked. And I agree with Selectmen McManus that they can be effective. However, be prepared for a veritable floodgate of requests then for them.
Angel?
Just a question. If you went to a two step process where somebody applied for it, and went through the police department and various other groups to determine whether this is a good location, and would there be a benefit, and it wouldn't be an impediment to ambulances, et cetera? What about a betterment approach? Is it possible to do that? So if somebody, if a group, a community wanted it and thought it was that important, calculate the cost, they come up with the money, and they have their speed bump. And it solves two problems. We don't have the money to do that. I mean, it just, in the taxes, at least these days. But if people are really concerned about it, we're dredging Allen Harbor, and sixty percent of the money, or forty percent of the money's coming from the abutters, who saw a problem and are contributing to it. I don't know if that's legal or not.
I don't have any problem with, as I said, I do have a problem with speed bumps. Speed bumps damage cars, and that is a huge liability issue. But I do not have a problem with the speed humps. However, they do, they are expensive, and you do have to sign them out correctly and paint them out correctly as well. So there is substantial expense to them. And I, if there's a betterment program and people, people want them, as I said, I'm interested in slowing the speed down. And unfortunately, I don't have the resources to have a speed, a speed control officer at every location where we're getting the requests.
You know, that suggestion opens up a broad category of calming devices, because you can, you can narrow the drive, you know, the street in places and slow it down. There's a whole series of different calming devices. If we're going to go that, we want to explore more than just the speed humps. You know, and maybe the betterment is to pay for it.
I can't imagine you're getting Bank Street any narrower.
I was just trying to envision that myself.
That's the calming effect.
And that's a good point. My point is, is that there's, there's numerous different so-called calming devices. And I'll take it narrowing is not one of them that may be appropriate there. But if we're going to look at betterment for some, we want to look at over a wide range of what's now available.
Everybody should understand, even if we want to do that, that's a several year project, because you've got to go through the state to get permission to do that.
What?
Maybe a road benefit might work, might work.
We're going to go through the state on a town road, do we?
No, we don't have to go through the state on a town road.
Well, we can explore those, I guess, as we go forward. Any other comments or discussion, questions for the chief? David?
Yeah, I want to thank the chief for the way in which he brought the people together, and has been very supportive of our concerns. He has, we met two times for several hours each of those two times, and were prepared to meet a third time, but we didn't need to because we felt like we had done the work that we could do. And then he's sent out emails to inform us of the noise of bylaw coming up at town meeting, and so on, and this meeting tonight. So he's been, he's done exactly what you asked him to do, and then some. The two, the two major concerns that we have in that area is the noise. And hopefully, those, that issue will be addressed by both the closing of the parking lot at ten o'clock, and the noise bylaw change. The other thing is the speed. It's incredible how, I know if you're standing there, you think someone's doing sixty miles an hour, and they're not doing sixty miles an hour. They're only doing forty miles an hour, probably. But when they, when the, when people, I won't say who, you know, most of them are young people, but not everybody. When they come up that hill from that beach, it's incredible. It's perceived to be incredible how fast they're going. Or when they're coming down, and they get to that point where the, you know, the road takes that turn, past the braddock lane, and then they see that straightaway, and they hit the top of that hill. I mean, I'm out mowing my lawn or working in the garden, and I, you can hear them coming. And so speed is a real issue. And there was a twenty mile an hour speed sign down by the beach coming up the hill. It certainly, it certainly didn't do anything to help the day the kid hit the Forbidge's house, because he was obviously doing more than twenty miles an hour. In fact, one of the episodes at the beach, they tore the sign down. It was gone. It was gone for a week or two, until someone found it in the shrubs. And then, you know, somebody jammed it back down into the sand, and there it sat. It's still there, I think. But, you know, someone who wants the speed isn't going to look at a twenty mile an hour speed sign. They don't, they don't know what the speed is. If you asked anybody going down that Bank Street, they wouldn't know what the speed was. What has helped, however, are those blinking twenty mile an hour signs that occasionally are put up. Because that all of a sudden reminds somebody that they are going over the speed limit. And also, I think they also believe that their speed is being recorded somehow. You know, that either there's a camera there, or something is kind of, and so they do slow down. In fact, when those signs were up earlier, February, I think, and I saw one of those cars go flying down the street, and all of a sudden, that sign came into view, and he or she slowed down considerably. So speed is really the other major issue. As John Fraser says, we're all just kind of waiting for the moment when somebody gets out of control and hits somebody, or does more damage to somebody's property, or somebody gets killed. We talked about the speed bump as one way to control speed, because a speed sign, you have to interpret it, and you have to decide for yourself if you're going to obey it. And, and, but the speed hump, or bump, or whatever you want to call the thing, certainly makes you, unless you want to lose the bottom of your car, and maybe some of these people do, I don't know. You're going to slow down when you hit that thing. I've also been in Hyannis. There are streets in Hyannis, I mean, streets, the whole length of the street have speed humps, eight, ten humps. Newton, there are certain streets in Newton where there is, these are public streets. These aren't private lanes, and so on and so forth. So it's not that this is an impossible thing to do. So, however, in the committee, we, because there was some resistance from the highway department and others to go with the speed hump because of some of the issues that the chief mentioned, we said, okay, let's try the six or seven things that we can all agree on, and see how it works out this summer. If it doesn't work, then we're going to probably want to lobby some more for the speed humps. I'm hearing more support for speed humps among the Selectmen's Board tonight than I've, than I would have imagined. And so maybe people in our neighborhood can get together and talk about this some more, and decide if we want to impose some more tax upon ourselves, and see if we can't put in a speed hump or something. Obviously, we'd have to do that according to the highway rules and whatever. But anyway, the point is that speed is the other major factor. And whatever we can do to reduce that, I mentioned to the chief in an email a couple of weeks ago that they're already gathering down there, the cars are racing back and forth. It's amazing, you know, I'm lying in bed at ten o'clock at night, and you hear one car come up from the beach, another one, there's five or six or seven. They all gather down there in clusters, and then they all leave at the same time. And they're all apparently going over twenty miles an hour. Anyway, so, speed is the other major factor. Not just because it's disturbing in terms of the noise of the car and so on, but the danger to people who are walking, the danger to the drivers and the passengers themselves. So anyway, I wanted to thank the chief, and I wanted to thank you for being so sensitive to our need, and for creating this group in the first place.
Thank you, Dave. Go ahead, while you're standing, Ed, why don't you make your?
Oh, who am I?
Okay.
My name's Evan Cook, I live at thirty-one Bank Street, across from the Purdys. I endorse everything Dave says, except with two exceptions. He, being a reverend, is too kind to characterize who's doing this. It's all kids, it's their late teens, early twenties. And my other comment would be that Bank Street beach is a major attraction in Harwich. It's for the common good. I don't think that the local neighbors should be the ones funding a betterment for speed control. Everyone in town, it's the most popular beach in town, almost everybody uses the beach. We're concerned about the noise, but also about safety, because people are walking down the beach at night. There's going to be, as we've all said, a fatality there. And we don't want to have to say we told you so. But it's, they go excessive rates of speed. Sergeant Konstantin was citing statistics that they had, that these, the machines that display the speed also record speed, or they have another device to record speed. And I offhandly said that somebody was going fifty miles an hour, and he said, I doubt that. Then he looked at the statistics, and he said there were a couple instances of fifty. We joked that that's the person I saw. However, they, if you, you know how narrow Bank Street is, thirty is fairly fast, forty is ridiculously fast. And they go forty, fifty miles an hour coming out of the parking lot, as Dave Purdy said, in groups. And this is at ten, eleven, twelve, one o'clock, two o'clock, at night. So I would just say that before you consider making it a betterment issue, consider the common good, and that it's not that we're just trying to save money, but it's, the whole town is going to, is going to be impacted by any injuries or fatalities that occur there.
Okay, thank you, Ed.
Well, I guess I had some of the comments that I wanted to make. I used to live next to a town that has developed speed humps to find art. And you can develop, you can put in a speed hump that controls at twenty miles an hour, twenty-three miles an hour, twenty-seven, you know, and it, and it, and it, a twenty mile an hour hump, if you go over it at twenty miles an hour, you feel something, but it doesn't jar you. At twenty-five, you may get bumped up a little bit. At thirty, you really feel it, and at thirty-five, you run the risk of taking your oil pan off. But I mean, it isn't such that, you know, a speed bump, you know, you go over at anything over fifteen miles an hour, and you need a, you need a suspension job, because it's so abrupt. But they, you know, so they can be used on a variety of different roads, and sized accordingly. And they can also be done in a number of ways. My old neighboring town set up their program, and in areas where there was a public facility, which was causing undue stress on the surrounding streets, those were put in at the expense of the municipality. In neighborhoods where there was no town attractive, attraction that was causing, the neighbors just felt people were ducking through their neighborhood because it was a shortcut, you know, and going excessive rates, those were done at betterment. So there's a distinction made there. And then the other factor in their program, so they didn't, because you're right, once you start allowing them in, you get overwhelmed, is that they set up a quota. They would only consider so many projects a year. And so it gave a chance to put them in, see how they got, they worked, and then over time, fine tune the design and how the system worked. And I think, you know, come the new fiscal year, I think maybe that's one of the things we want to ask our police department, our highway department, and our traffic and safety committee to seriously undertake designing a program.
Thank you, Ed. It sounds like we're in agreement of moving ahead with what your folks have done now, and at the same time, taking some of the comments Ed and others make of exploring what speed humps or calming, and other calming devices may work to better control the speed there. And we've asked the chief to report back on these broad issues in August, and so we should have a good feeling by then, huh?
Larry, the reports from the chief indicates that they would like an approval from the Board of Selectmen. I don't know if we need to vote on it or not, but I think it's clear that we're in agreement.
I think it's clear, I don't know if we need a formal vote. Again, good job, and we'll see how it goes. Of course, if something goes, if it looks like no one's paying attention, chief, you can report back to us before, before August, huh?
And, you know, personally, I'm very serious about universal enforcement. And I will be, you know, one of the reasons why I voted in favor of it, although those comments troubled me, that if I find that there is a significant amount of uneven enforcement, I'll ask that we reconsider.
And then we'll come to a vote.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to old business. And we'll bring up again the Harbor Master, Natural Resource Director, Assistant Harbor Master Position Descriptions. Jim, you want to, I think there were some suggestions last time of making at least one change in the position description.
Three, Mr. Chairman, again, a cover memo dated May second, indicating what the current job descriptions look like, the pay ranges, grades are all documented there for both the Natural Resources Director and the Environmental Science Water Quality Director positions. And then the proposal is to split the natural resources from Harbor Master. And I believe you have drafted new jobs. And I believe you have draft new job descriptions for both Harbor Master as well as Natural Resource Director slash Assistant Harbor Master. And we've edited and included a number of your comments and recommendations. And I believe, and just a brief conversation before the start of this meeting, Angela gave me one more brief edit for the Harbor Master job description. In regards to the control, control of ramps, I think it's in item number two, under essential functions. The way it reads now is oversees the rental of town vessels per the related town regulations, supervises the rental of transient dockage at the municipal marina on a nightly basis, supervises and controls boat ramps and seasonal passes and offloading permits for the commercial fleet and vessels and migratory fishing. And Angela's offered a slight amendment that includes enforces regulations pertaining to boat ramps, seasonal passes, and offloading. So, that's the one edit, and I'll make that change.
Okay. Angela, any more comments?
No, I, we've come to a point where you're comfortable with it.
We should go forward. Yeah, Linda?
How does, just remind me, what's the process of regrading a job? Is there a committee, or is there a point system? How is that reviewed? And how has that assessment been made to, you know, just because the job description has been written, how does it get regraded? In terms of the...
The natural resources.
Natural resources. How is it getting regraded? Who's making that decision? What's the process? What are the rules? What's the point? You know, is there a, et cetera?
Right, I believe that through the charter, the town meeting has given you the authority to do the regrading. Obviously, they've retained responsibility and authority to create new positions, but you have the authority with regard to the regrade.
But I would have to say that I would have absolutely no clue as to why it would be any grade if there isn't a way to measure it. So, how do we do that? How do we make that vote if we don't know what the rules are and the... Because I've done this work before in terms of grading jobs, so I know that there's generally, you get so much percent for this and that and the other thing, and supervisory, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Skill versus know-how, you know, versus technical training.
In a formal personnel system, you have a point system and...
But how do we do that? I know we don't have a formal personnel system.
This is more comps with like positions and similar towns, looking at what the market is right now.
If I may, I think what Linda's referring to is that we first looked at the position description, so it looks like in this case we'd have to compare the existing position description with what we're suggesting here, and then specifically why this is, what's increased in this position description over the other one.
And is it significant enough?
That really defines it more than comps do, that's more of a salary.
Correct.
But not a great, not a great change.
But if you look at the M three for the environmental science, it did not include the duties of Natural Resource Director, which was part of the Harbor Master M four. So, the M four grade currently has both the Harbor Master and a Natural Resource Director functions.
I suggest the way to answer that is a table comparing one to the other and then what the increases are. Linda, I think that would answer your...
Yes, it would, it would make me feel a little better than just saying sure.
Okay.
Well, in terms of being practical, I know that the town administrator wants to get moving on the Harbor Master piece, so perhaps we can split the two for right now, because...
Whatever your motion says, we can go with it.
I can do that, I think that's a good idea. Split the two decisions and go with the Harbor Master one, which seems okay, and wait for that table to then make that assessment.
Is that your motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Whoever makes the motions in charge. Is there a second?
I second that.
Any more discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we'll move ahead with that and we'll come back with the Natural Resource Director's second piece. Ed?
It just occurs to me, one comment is that by moving ahead with this, we've deleted some of the responsibilities from the Harbor Master's position. And it may warrant that rather than it remained at an M four, it gets reduced to an M three.
That could be the argument, if you, but if you compared what the Harbor Master grades compensation is with the other communities, we don't have to worry about being above that.
But again, we're not going down that, we're not going down that way. Let me suggest, because Ed raises it, after I've disagreed with you on another point, so I'll agree with him on this. Looks to me like we have the same table comparison, and then we can make a rational decision.
Then I will withdraw my motion.
Me too.
Your second.
Oh, wait a minute, why withdraw? We've already moved it, we've already done that. This is a grading, we still want to go ahead and post the position and hire, you know, and move ahead, I think.
Well, that's, that's what the problem is. I mean, we're gonna be telling a person he's gonna be hired at X grade.
And then if you change that afterwards, that's sort of...
It's a little difficult.
Yeah, it's a little difficult. So, he or she needs to know exactly what it is they're applying for.
Jim, remind me of the timing of posting and when we, you don't put the salary in the posting, do you?
We've got the grade in the salary range and the advertisement.
That's out there now.
Yes. Application's due by May twenty-fifth.
And so, we're sort of moving ahead anyway with our position description.
No, we have the job description, the...
We have this job description going on tonight.
Right.
And, well, have we negotiated this at all? These changes with the management union? Or do we need to?
Not with the Harbor Master, with the environmental science. Now, I've had a discussion with the president of that union with regard to that.
So, the answer is yes?
There's been a...
Go for the Harbor Master, yes for the natural resources.
Right.
Well, the question is, does it have to be formally discussed and negotiated and agreed?
The Natural Resource Director slash Assistant Harbor Master will have to be, yes. But not the Harbor Master.
Okay. Well, in the, going back to Ed's point, is he going, but we do have a wide range in the salary in that grading too. I have some, I think we have some urgency not to leave that open any longer than we need to, the Harbor Master, because the season's coming upon us.
And I guess the other question, so we have an application or a listing out, and applications are due on the twenty-fifth. After we receive the applications and close the period, then what's the process from there?
Form a screening committee, rank the applications, and make a decision on interviews.
Okay.
Goal is to try to...
Have we established a screening committee?
There's been conversation on that there'd be a member of the Board of Selectmen, a member of the waterways committee, and a department head.
Okay. Okay, so what did we decide? I think we decided to go ahead with the Harbor Master because it's posted with the grade, and then we'll come back to the natural resource when we have a look at the position, you know, descriptions.
I guess, you know, the question isn't really, you know, if the sixty-one to seventy-seven is the appropriate salary range from what the market is, that's fine. But in the grading of the different levels, partly are about salary, but they're also about the level of responsibility that the different levels have.
And the interrelationship between, internally between positions as well.
And so, maybe, you know, in fact, you know, we may need to bump up the positions, leave the salary scale where it is, but, you know, what, in this case, where this was an M four and the Natural Resources Director is an M three, then maybe they both should be at M three, but the salary level, because there's less of a job responsibility than the incumbent who carried both responsibilities.
And that's exactly what we've been trying to get to, Jim, I think, and I don't think, I know, is to better describe position descriptions. And then, once that's done, look at the, what salaries are paid elsewhere, because that's a separate discussion.
Right. Actually, we looked at the salary schedules for the other communities even first, just to see where we're ranking.
Well, that's fine, but still two different processes, and sometimes we get mixed up.
You have an external comparison and an internal comparison, that's right.
Okay, so...
And might I suggest we probably should start doing that before we advertise jobs?
Okay, move on to new business. First item of new business is to vote to appoint a registrar from a list submitted by Democratic Town Committee.
Mr. Chair.
Ed?
I'd move that we nominate or approve the nomination of Ray Gottwald as a registrar of vote.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, raise the person. Next is the town administrator's report.
For the week ending May fourth and May eleventh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped one important, Jim, can I back up?
Sure.
We have a suggestion, actually from Peter, and he's unable to make it here tonight, but I thought was something we should go ahead and deal with, and that is, the suggestion is we add Pledge of Allegiance to start our Board of Selectmen's...
Mr. Chair.
Ed?
I move that we start all regular sessions of the Board of Selectmen with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think it's a great idea, as we all obviously do, so all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, it's passed.
One thing, it's binary, you need to take the flag and put it over there so that everybody can look at it, otherwise, especially you, you're turning around and backing everybody.
And Jerry might throw stuff at me, I suppose, if I have my back here.
I think we could just turn easily. It's not that hard.
Okay, now Selectmen's report, Jim?
Okay, this is for the week ending May fourth and eleventh. As you know, we, because of the town meeting, we didn't submit it last week. The, we've dealt with the job descriptions, the community center contract, there was some conversation with Sevi Strukalowski, and we've worked through those details and presented you a contract this evening that he's satisfied with, and so are we. Dealt with septic and site plan layout. Secondly, we've got a donation coming from the Friends of the Council on Aging for eight thousand dollars to complete the loop on the walking path around the ball fields. As you know, that the Disability Rights Committee had proposed to apply twelve thousand dollars of an article that they had for the southerly side of the track. And the Friends now will close the loop on a northerly circumference of that walking path. And I think that that's gonna be a popular walking path for a lot of people that will look forward to exercising behind the community center in a safe environment. There were some concerns prior to the town meeting with some butters when they saw the layout of the solar panels behind the backstop of the Babe Ruth Field. Those concerns were translated into a IP on the article. If you recall, under the Phase Two C VAC, we were looking for solar panels at the golf course, Cremery Valley, and for the water department, south of thirty-nine. The Broadway, the winning bidder, tried to put way too many solar panels behind the community center that would adversely impact the neighborhood, and that just didn't work. So, the IP was an appropriate reaction to that design.
Mr. Chair?
No, Ed?
Very good. I had a conversation, and I forget with who, somebody in town who was interested in this issue. And it occurred to me that we, at the community center, we were looking at ground mounting the panels because the age of the roof at the community center made it not so you'd want to put the panels up there. There wasn't enough life left in the existing roofing. And the selection of this area for ground mounting was taken because I would probably imagine that the area that is being reserved potentially for a future pool, you wouldn't want to put them there, but it occurs to me, if you ground mounted them there, they'd be less of a concern to the neighbors. And when you build the pool, you put them on the roof.
I suppose that's an idea, depending on the design of the roof, whether they can take the weight or whatever, but...
Well, you upped it, you upped the design of the roof slightly to carry the weight. Or potentially, you know, that's not a project that's going to happen immediately. By the time we get to that coming to fruition, we may have been in the process of putting a new roof on the community center, and then the panels could go up there. I mean, you know.
Yeah.
But I think to insist that they go out to a periphery of the site simply because that's envisioned as their forever and permanent location. I mean, this is, this is one of the installations that I think is easily movable compared to a lot of other things. And so, we ought to, I think, be a little bit more expansive in thinking about it.
Unfortunately, the bidder didn't bid it that way. But the, I think what we had envisioned was something similar to what we put at the police station, when there was just a, you know, a small series of panels that would really be helpful, but not overload the property, so.
If I may, Ed's suggestion would also respond to a concern of the CPC committee that since CPA funds were used for the ball field, where it was putting solar on there, in fact, is different use in the scope of the CPA funds. And we were gonna check into legality of that. But doing what you suggest would also get us around that concern, if it is a concern, and we'll get our legal opinion back.
You have to bear in mind that the Phase One C VAC, which is the seventeen thousand one hundred panels on the landfill, fully meets the municipal load. We're generating like four point six meg, so anything above that is really, you know, just an extra. What I was trying to work with the golf committee is they want to convert the golf carts to electric and putting the panels up at the golf course would have been perfect. So, I think we need to just pursue another avenue if C VAC is not the answer.
Yeah.
You're basically saying we probably should not go forward with panels at the community center at this point?
Not the way that bidder on Phase Two proposed it, no. No, it was just too overloading that small area.
How's that work, Jim? Do we ask C VAC to go look at other bidders, or do we do that ourselves?
Well, they're talking about a third phase this summer, if they can lift the cap. They're looking for the legislature to lift the cap. Right now, there's a cap. So, if the legislature acts, they'll do a Phase Three, if not, they won't. We've got a, we've got a project going forward with the recirculation of the Brooks Library parking lot and Robert Hauer, winning bidder ninety-eight fifty. That project should start anytime now. Good news on House bills thirty-five oh three, thirty-five oh four, which are the two charter amendments. Received an email this morning that thirty-five oh three was engrossed by the Senate. So, both of them should be ready for the governor's desk.
Was one of these charter amendments the...
One was...
The capital outlay?
Yep, and one was Montomoy.
Well, because it's not in effect yet, I think we, I seriously want somebody to sit down and go through the tapes and the motion and review, and maybe our legal counsel review the approval of the capital outlay plan. And maybe our, our legal counsel review the approval of the capital outlay pan- plan to make sure that that was done.
The motion was the identical to last year. Uh, Anita checked it with, uh, Mike Ford.
Okay.
There's a five K road race, uh, looking, uh, looking for sponsors. Cape Cod Commission's looking for a rep to, uh, from Harwich to represent, uh, a regional bicycle planning committee. Does anyone have any mind, any nominees in mind?
Uh, maybe your, uh, first, uh, would be to check with the bike, our bikeways committee and see if anyone wants to, uh,
Well.
do that as well. Ed?
I'm from Connecticut.
Does.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the, the regional bicycle planning committee.
Yeah.
Um, there is, uh, one person that I, I'd like to ask and see if there's interest in, yeah.
I thought you raised your hand, you might be volunteering, but that's not, uh, going that far, huh?
So you want to ask that person?
Well, okay, we'll do that.
Yeah. Um. Okay.
Great.
Okay, we've got the, uh, a couple of, uh, comments on that, uh, Red River, uh, beach, uh, dog policy. One coming from, uh, border health and one coming from recreation. Thank you. In preparation, I wanted to provide that to you before the hearing. Uh, we've got a letter from, uh, Charles Solano, uh, commissioner of the, the Cape Cod Senior Softball League, uh, wishing to terminate the, uh, the five-year license agreement, uh, which called for maintaining or paying for the maintenance of the, uh, the field. And that termination will be May twenty-fourth. I know Larry and I want to, uh, sit down with both John Mahan and, and then possibly follow up with, uh, with, uh, Charles Solano to ask, uh, some of the background of that particular decision. We had, uh, researched the question of, uh, how to, uh, retain emails for public record, given some of the, um, uh, requests for information from other communities. And, uh, Foster suggesting that we set up some standard, uh, email addresses for boards, committees, commissions. Um, we could do it as early as July first, if the board wants to pursue it. That way, uh, would be our responsibility to retain the record, the public record. So you separate your personal emails, uh, from, from town official records? Is there any thoughts on that one?
It seems, I think we're following Angel, what you suggested is, we have an email that we would copy so that things go back and forth, and a copy goes to the.
Send it, send it to the town computer.
Yeah, send it to town, you can use your own personal computer, but as soon as you send it there.
Right, and we, we'll keep the record for it.
Keep the records in it.
Mm-hmm.
And I can empty about four thousand emails out of my computer.
I think it also makes sense to have the individual committees have a committee one, too.
Uh-huh.
That's a good idea.
I, I see no reason to, uh, to hold this off, actually. I'd, I'd go ahead and put it in place.
We'll proceed then with the Foster.
I think it solves a lot of issues potentially.
Yep. In fact, there's a proposal coming forward to, uh, do experimental LED, uh, street lighting for, uh, savings and, and, um, uh, efficiency. We'll have to, you know, s- see if we can get community feedback on whether or not the lumens are sufficient. Make a safe, uh, a safe street light. We've got the question of the, uh, C D M review of the Route one thirty-seven project as it applies to, uh, potential routes to connect the sewer to the Chatham Treatment Plant. It's Dave Young's, uh, uh, review. Looks like the, if, if the, uh, sewer pipe were to be placed in Route one thirty-seven, it has to be pretty much, uh, under the asphalt as opposed to within the, uh, right of way. So I've been, been looking at, uh, the topography to see if, uh, an alternative route, uh, could be, uh, achieved to connect to the plant without, uh, having to do a change order with Lawrence Lynch, who's already under contract to, to rebuild the, that road. Chief Mason has got a, uh, request for, uh, Peace Officers Memorial Day on May fifteenth. And a request for lowering the flag.
Uh, Jim, uh, let me suggest we interrupt and let the chief, uh, deal with that now, so they don't have to hang around all night. And, uh, this is a, uh.
Good evening, Sergeant Consonine. Um, thank the board and, and Jim and, and the chief for putting this on the agenda. Um, Peace Officers Memorial Day was established actually by President Kennedy. And it was kind of long, lost, forgotten. We've worked hard over the last couple of years to get it going, to get it known in the community. Um, as you know, we lost an officer, uh, Kenneth Grindell, in the line of duty in the sixties, uh, who died of a heart attack. So, you know, we have some connection there. This week of May fifteenth is, uh, Police Memorial Day in Washington, D.C. We have two officers on their own time representing the Town of Harwich and Harwich Police down there, um, with all the services going on. And we just encourage, uh, President Obama asked that tomorrow all flags be lowered on the fifteenth and every fifteenth of May. So did, uh, our, our governor, Patrick, and we encourage everybody in the town, our flags will be lowered half staff, and we encourage all residents to do the same and, and honor this, this Memorial Day.
Thank you. Uh, Jim, could you, uh, ha- ask Foster to put that on our website for a thing tomorrow morning, so it's, there's people's.
So the public's aware of it, sure.
Public's aware of it, and they also know when they see half, uh, flags at half staff, they'll, they'll mean something to them.
Sure.
And, and the police department wears, uh, mourning ribbons on the fifteenth, all the badges, just as another resemblance, but we thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Given you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Jim, that's.
No, no problem. Uh, Harbor Master Leach, uh, has, uh, submitted a letter of support to EPA for the no discharge in Antucket Sound. Got a, uh, a town council ruling, uh, Robert Troy out of Born. Mouring issue. Thought it might be relevant. Uh, natural gas prices, we've locked in for the next year at, uh, rates that are pretty, uh, pretty attractive right now. I've asked Paul Sweetser to, uh, mark out your, uh, bordering, uh, markers for booster perambulation.
You still have your paint, Ed, so we're okay?
And the brush?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Governor Patrick, uh, and the Secretary of Labor and Workforce Development, Joanne Goldstein, have been working on, uh, trying to document, uh, abuses with unemployment, particularly for, uh, those that are, uh, uh, already retired.
So I, I read this, but I didn't quite, uh, the issue is people, uh, claiming unemployment when it's, when it's not true?
Well, th- they're unemployed, but they're also retired, and they're recol- they're collecting a pension and still claiming that they, they can work under retirement. You can work, uh, nine hundred and sixty hours before you have to stop. And so when the nine sixty hits, then they go and collect unemployment, uh, it's like double dipping.
It's not like double dipping, it is double dipping.
It is double dipping.
It's not like.
So, uh, in fact, we have a case ourselves right now that we've got under appeal, so we, we're, we're documenting that and trying to provide the governor and the secretary with, uh, evidence of, of this abuse.
So if this is illegal now, why?
It is legal.
It is legal.
It is legal to do it.
Oh, it is legal now.
The governor's trying, the governor's trying to develop a case to, to the legislature why it shouldn't be.
Okay, I was trying to figure out what the outcome.
Well, what people do is they then say they've worked their nine hundred and sixty hours and they're retired. And then they say they lost their job through no fault of their own, so therefore they're eligible for unemployment under all the rules.
Yeah, great.
It's a sca- it's frightful.
In, in, in fact, a number of our, uh, seasonal golf employees are, uh, on a pension and been collecting unemployment.
On a public pension.
On a public pension. Although, uh, Dave can attest, the, uh, unemployment costs for, uh, the current year are way down compared to past years. We're finally getting a, a handle on that issue. Uh, Paula, uh, Champagne is reporting that we, we did get some reimbursement from the Commonwealth on the flu, uh, vaccine insurance program. Red River Project is pretty much wrapped up. We've got four little punch list items. We, uh, we were going to pave last, the end of last week, but the raining delayed it. So we've got the paving of the two, uh, uh, spots, guard rail, signage, and as-built plans prepared by Horst and Witten. We hope to have all the federal reimbursement back in the, into our account by, uh, the end of, uh, June. And again, uh, remarkable undertaking by Highway Department to pull this off, uh, both on time and under budget. Last week, Chairman Valentine and I attended a senior volunteer luncheon, uh, put on by, um, the, the Council on Aging. Recognized, uh, a, a number of volunteers and their, uh, contribution to the community. It was a, a, a nice event. And then there's a, uh, a correspondence, there's a, uh, a letter from a, a fifth grade teacher, Catherine Kane, uh, complimenting Heinz Proff for, uh, for his, uh, uh, participation in one of her classes. I think that's it.
Thank you, Jim.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, selectman's reports, we've, uh, anyone have a comment or thing they want to add? If not, we'll move to.
Two questions.
Okay.
One of which is, on the April seventeenth and the regular in our minutes, there was supposed to, we had a discussion on tax title list and the status of tax title items, and I was just wondering where, uh, if that list was in process and when we're, uh, going to see it. So that was in the minutes of the April seventeenth meeting, and in the, uh, also in the April twenty-third minutes, we were supposed to, the board of selectmen was supposed to write a letter to the Montomoy School Committee, Building Committee, et cetera, on the Little League fields, a letter of support. Did we do that?
We did not.
We did not, okay?
There was plenty of conversation.
We had conversation, I think, our, and maybe hopefully not, not too hopeful, but we were hopeful that was at that point resolved, and it kind of got dragged on some more.
With regard to tax title, there's, 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 uh, two issues. There's, um, I think I've indicated to you that, uh, there's been a lot of work on the, the largest, uh, tax title, uh, properties, which is Echo Woods, which if you're coming.
Time, time, time.
Okay.
The list. There was supposed to be a list prepared of all the things that are in tax title and what the status was, because I know they go to, go to Boston and everybody fools around with it up there, and it can take two years to get back. It's the list.
Okay.
That we were, we're supposed to have.
And to differentiate that from owners unknown, because we're, there's a second list on owners unknown.
Sure.
You want the tax title list.
I think we're specifically, uh, the minutes specifically talk about the tax title.
Okay, we'll get to the tax title list.
Because that was supposed to be done.
Actually, David can attest to that too. We, we talked about that at, at length last week on, um, the amount of, uh, outstanding taxes.
Angel?
Just a comment, I, I, this will be on air tomorrow morning, and there'll still be plenty of time to vote. Just to remind, you might want to remind people, we have a ballot out there to get out and vote tomorrow. Tomorrow's Tuesday, tomorrow's Tuesday.
Vote early and vote often, right, Ed?
I, I think you have, Angel, thank you. Ed?
Um, uh, I guess another, uh, question that I, I just remembered. Um, I was asked this, uh, to look into where it is. Um, last, a year ago, town meeting authorized either the sale, I guess, the sale of a small parcel of land adjacent to the landfill.
Queenian Road.
Queenian Road.
Brookroy.
Yeah.
Oh, right, right, right.
How are we progressing?
We're, uh, I continue to, um, pursue it with, uh, the land surveyor, who's doing work with the, the parcel description and the Cape Cod Commission. There's that issue, and then the second one was, uh, also invol- involving the same family uh, with the South Meeting House Cemetery. There's a land swap there as well. Both of those are now in the engineering department.
Is there also an issue of, of undoing a site assignment issue with, uh, the, the property attached to landfill?
Um, I don't think the site assignment is, is, uh,
It's problematic.
problematic.
Okay. All right.
But because it's in excess of twenty acres, it triggers, uh, some kind of a, a review process by the Cape Cod Commission.
The site assignment is what, Ed?
It's in, it's in excess of twenty acres?
The whole parcel, the current parcel.
Oh.
Which is the whole landfill.
Okay, yeah, okay, no.
It's a subdivision.
Yeah.
That we're doing, it's a subdivision.
Isn't it an A and R?
I wish it was just local.
Can't throw it, you can't.
Okay.
Okay, anyone care to move to adjourn then?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, folks.